Hello, Brian here.
Hello, Brian. This is Ron. How are you?
Hey, Brian. How are you? Where are you at?
I'm also at Zoom at my office because I have a zoning meeting at seven tonight.
Yeah, I knew that.
For for Banger. When I first took over that solicitor job, Banger met on the fourth Wednesday of the month.
Right.
So I said, okay, I can do that. That's not a problem. As long as you guys were meeting on the second and fourth Tuesdays. But now that you've jumped to the second and fourth Wednesdays, once in a while, the moons align and Banger has a zoning hearing. This is the first one they've had since two thousand and twenty-one, so there's not many.
Good for you. Hey, Ron, I don't know what's going on with some of these suits, but between you and I, I'm gonna ask that I don't go. I have not been subpoenaed yet by Dougie.
Yeah, I think you're okay. I mean, I'm gonna be up at the township tomorrow. I think I have to meet with the attorney. I'm not sure why. I'm not gonna be testifying. But I think he has testifying, John Tressler, their expert whose name escapes me right now, a water, stormwater expert, and I don't know if they're gonna have
Eddie.
Yeah, him testify, but I think that's it because of the way the court has pared down the case and has pared down the nature and extent of the damages. I think that's all he's doing, but tomorrow I'll have a better idea when I go up.
Okay.
Brian, can you hear me? This is John.
John Tressler, how are you?
I'm well. I met with Ben this morning and Doug is not going to subpoena you, so you're off the hook.
All right. I think he did that as a favor. You know, good, bad, or indifferently, he'll sue sue me and get and do a favor. Well, okay.
He snagged Robert, though.
Yeah, he got Robert himself.
Yep.
Yep. Well, that'll be interesting. That'll be interesting. We'll see what happens. And the boys with Water Gap, we'll talk about that in executive sessions, okay?
Good. Okay.
Okay. Hey, Jacob?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I thought I heard your voice. Okay, I'm here.
All right. It's six o'clock P M. This is the regular business meeting of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me reciting the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
It stands one nation under God, indivisible.
We hope that does this for all.
Thank you, everybody. Members present include myself, Chairman Jacob Pride, Vice Chair Robert Lovenheim, Supervisor Brian Barrett via Zoom, our Township Manager Billy Hylick is here, as well as our Engineer John Tressler Zoom and Solicitor Ron Karasak via Zoom. Announcements, we have, we had an executive session on March eighth from six forty to six fifty-four P M to discuss litigation regarding the Water Gap suits and the commencement of the action by the Shawnee Preservation Society. And the other announcement is that we have our special meeting next Monday at six P M to consider our curative amendment on warehouse and solar uses. First order of business, the consideration of the March eighth, two thousand twenty-three regular business meeting minutes, and those are before us. Alex, do you have the chance to take a look at those?
Again, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Lovenheim. Do I hear a second?
Take it.
Mr. Barrett, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do not have any public hearings or plans to act on, therefore we will proceed to our reports. First, we have our Solicitor Ron Karasak via Zoom. Go ahead, Ron.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to assume everyone can hear me. And with respect to reports, there are two items that we need to address, and that is that we've talked about a proceeding with a condemnation regarding the airstrip road property. In order to do that formally, there has to be a resolution prepared and approved. So I would like to, at some point, and it could be under new business if you wish, have the board entertain a motion to direct me and authorize me to prepare a resolution for approval by the board. And the second item is that you had agreed, I believe, at the last hearing to approve the cooperation and cost reimbursement agreement with respect to this matter. And I don't think you need to do it again. However, it has been approved also, I believe, today at this morning's meeting by the Industrial Development Authority. And there was an addition with respect to this, and that addition is that Attorney Kanzinger wanted to put into the agreement what would be an estimated amount that would cover the cost of the township in the condemnation. And I advised her that a fifteen thousand dollar amount would probably be okay. Now, again, we can't look into the future. If we could, we'd all be rich people, but I think that should be enough, obviously, for the proceedings and maybe if there is some slight objection that we would with which we would have to deal. If not, then, of course, that would have to be reimbursed. So I want to just make certain that the board is okay and I guess reaffirming and reapproving the cooperation and reimbursement agreement now that it has that final amount in and it has now been approved by the industrial authority. And other than that, again, there is that litigation with respect to the Delaware Water Gap issue and before the P U C and also the matter involving the Shawnee Preservation Society with respect to the Shawnee P R D, but those are in their infant stages and there's really not much to say, nor would I want to say much in an open meeting in any event. If we would want to discuss those in more detail, I would ask for an executive session. And other than that, that's all I have. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. John, I understand you have an update for us with regard to that animal hospital's septic planning module that we discussed previously.
I do, Jacob. I did speak to Ken Wolf today, the zoning officer. He and I went over the application. I went through with Ken the procedures that trigger land development as well as an engineering review on the E D zone. He agreed with me that in the future that those are the procedures that should be followed. Furthermore, I discussed where we were with the animal shelter and did take a quick look at the plot plan. Ken has issued building permits. I believe that at this point, the best course of action for the township is to simply sign the planning module and move forward, knowing that in the future, a similar project will probably get more scrutiny by myself and the board.
Great. Thank you very much for doing that research. Anything else to note, John?
That's all that I have for tonight. Other than to update you that I did meet with the insurance attorney in the Scriber case, we had some meeting prep this morning with Supervisor Lovenheim and Road Master McCormick. I am the expert witness for the township Mark Spats from H R G. Will be meeting with the insurance attorney tomorrow at the township building at ten A M. And the trial is scheduled to begin next week at nine o'clock at the Monroe County Courthouse.
Right.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Getting into new business, that was the consideration of the adoption of resolution, draft resolution number five twenty-six, opposition to the Delaware Water Gap. National Recreation Area redesignation is proposed. Supervisor Lovenheim indicated he wanted to say some things before we proceeded to the consideration, so. Well, you can speak after the board.
I'm trying to make a motion to deny this resolution. But I'd like to say that in denying it, I'm not necessarily agreeing with the other side. I'll call these the no parkers who want to keep the park as a recreation area and the yes parkers who want to make it into a national park. And I read through both proposals on their websites in detail, and my feeling is that neither side is really addressing the problem here, which we know, which is that this park is desperately underfunded. And it needs an enormous amount of money that it's not getting. The the no parkers don't address this, and the yes parkers think that somehow if it becomes a national park, it will suddenly be eligible for a lot of funds, but there's no guarantee of this. The the best idea that I heard on this is not an either proposal, which was former Park Superintendent John Donahue, who said that he thought that the only way to fund this park was through a an automatically connected fee, collected fee on Route two oh nine through the park, which would exempt anybody who was going through. In other words, if you were there less than three hours, you wouldn't pay the toll. I I but it's neither proposal. In fact, both proposals say specifically they do not want a any kind of a fee, entrance fee on two oh nine. So the question becomes, well, how do we fund this park? I don't know, but that's the reason I I'm rejecting this resolution, but I'm not really supporting the other resolution or the other side either. I have one rather, you know, left field idea, which is possibly that the state could it could entertain the idea of putting a, let's say, a toll on this role. One thing we have here in the Poconos is a bed tax, which was a an act of the legislature saying that we're a special tourist area and that we needed funding to promote tourism so that every tourist that comes in and stays overnight in the Poconos pays a tax which funds the Visitors Bureau and all of their activities. I think similar to that, maybe the state could enact a toll in the same way that we're talking about, which is it doesn't affect people who go through on two oh nine. It only affects people who stay in the park. What would have to happen is it would be collected before you got to the park boundary, and it would be negated after you left the park boundary, let's say in Milford, for instance. If it's possible, what it does, which would be interesting, is this, it allows us to collect money that we can then donate to the national park for purposes that we want. There's several several ways to do that that are all on the website about this. But for instance, if we wanted to fund a better beach at Bushkill, we could we could earmark funds specifically for that. It would only be for what's on the Pennsylvania side, and it would be something that could be controlled, let's say, either by D C E D or some committee set up by us. But it's it's a left field idea, but I think possibly if we want to explore that, it's a way to to fund this park, and I don't know of any other. So it's it would be a tourist tax. That's what we'd call it, another tourist tax in the disguise of a of a toll. Anyway, that's just something to throw out that people who are watching this meeting might think about because it is a big problem, but I don't think the solution is in either one of these presentations that I've read on the two websites for either not making a national park or making a national park. So that's that's I'm making that.
Resolution on the floor to reject resolution number five twenty-six. Motion on the floor to reject resolution number five twenty six for purpose. Of discussion.
I'll second the motion. Jacob, I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Lovenheim, second by Mister Barrett. Public comments.
May I ask who wrote this? I mean, they never came before the public and all of a sudden we've got a resolution five two six.
It was a draft resolution. I I often draft based on the sentiment relayed in previous public meetings, but it wasn't. It's not not transparent. I'm not understanding.
Are you allowed to do that in your job?
Are you allowed to draft resolutions? Yes. That that's what supervisors do.
And you failed to neglect that, you know, five hundred, you have five hundred and fifty acres. I live in the park and nobody told me. You should, why the public wasn't known? I don't know.
I'm I'm not sure how you can credibly say that, but.
And I know what Robert's trying to do, but that's all foolish and that's not going to work.
Okay.
John, John would be the one that could tell us how to do it more than anything.
Okay. All right. Thanks for your comments. Any others?
Looks like it might be a moot point, but I'd like to encourage you to reject this. Resolution. For a lot of reasons, but first of all, because everything in the resolution is untrue. The. Starting with the date of the creation of the park, it wasn't created in nineteen seventy eight, but in nineteen sixty five. Law was signed by President Johnson. Secondly. It says that it will lead to further negative impacts on local infrastructure and services. And. I think that's an opinion. It's unfounded. There's no evidence, no citations. One thing the no parkers supervisor indicated. Have held us at the Alliance for the Delaware River National Park and Preserve will not be preserved to. Is having citations and background information for everything we say. And everything we say has been supported by those by that kind of evidence. There may be an increase in people. We think we all know that there is an increase in people on a regular basis. Not only is that supported by National Park Service figures, it's supported by the figures from the Pocono Mountain Visitors Bureau. And the economic data is also supported, not only by the National Park Service economic data, but also more recently by. A consulting firm hired by the National Park and Conservation Association, recent economic report about the local impact from the park. It also, the resolution goes on to say that. The National Park Service is not involved. The National Park Service is generally not involved in the creation of a new park at all, unless in fact Congress passes the law. Telling us to study such a thing. And then they would have a report and perhaps even an opinion. But most national parks are. You know, our park here, Nancy Sheikaitis is famous for having helped us create this park. Marjorie Stoneman Douglas helped us create. The Everglades and on and on and on. So. The other next thing it says in here that. Congressional support hasn't been indicated. First of all, we haven't asked any congressman or senator to support the. Park proposal as of yet. But secondly, I think that it's important to recognize that. The supervisors and the county commissioners should not be following the leaders of the federal. Leader that should not be following the federal leaders, but you should be telling them what to do. That's how democracy works the best. Now. Some other things that. I'd just like to say about this is, you know, first of all, thank you for allowing me to come here and speak this evening.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I know I know that you know. Who I am. I'm John Donahue. I'm the president of the Pinchot Institute for Conservation, among other things. They keep me busy, but. You know, I think it's important to recognize that Smithfield Township has always been a place that has balanced. The protection of the environment and allow for economic development. So that's what our proposal is about. Yes, we do support economic development. In the sense that we'd like to see the local communities have a better economy. Because nothing and nobody protects the resources better than the local people. But in order to do that, they have to be invested in the public lands as being something that benefits them and not something that detracts from them. And this is what our proposal is all about. The the thing that I found most egregious about this is that it basically indicates that we have not consulted with the indigenous people. The fact of the matter is the no parkers have only spoken to one person, one sub chief. Of one tribe in New Jersey, a state recognized tribe in New Jersey. But we have also spent time with that particular person on several occasions. And. We've also met with the Delaware Tribe of Indians. In Oklahoma, the president of the Delaware Nation also in Oklahoma. We've reached out to the Stock. In Wisconsin. We've also met not just with the Ramapo in New Jersey, but with the other state recognized tribes. My colleague has met with the Nanakoke and with the Powhatan. Runapi and with other tribes down in Delaware. The in addition, we have reached out to the non governmental organization known as the. The Lenape Nation Rising. We had a long Zoom talk with them. And we responded to requests that they made. So we have spent a lot of time, a lot more than the opposition has. Finding out what indigenous people think about this proposal. And we encourage them to come out officially and support it. And I think that there's an opportunity for them. In the future to do that, but. I don't think I missed anything on the resolution, but essentially everything in the resolution is untrue. And I know that you recently indicated you'd like to see more information. I have. Brought you more information. One thing I I would like to mention about the economics is that. People have tried to indicate that national parks don't get more money than. Than other units of the national park system. I went through the Green Book, which is the budget of the entire National Park Service. And I counted all of the money that goes to. National parks. So the the entire National Park Service budget was two billion, six hundred and eighty eight million, two hundred and eighty seven thousand. Five hundred and ten million, five hundred and twenty four thousand went to sixty three national parks. If you average that divided by sixty three, that's close to eight million dollars a park. Two million, one, two billion, one hundred and sixty seven million. Seven hundred and sixty three thousand goes to the other three hundred and fifty nine units. And if you divide that by three fifty nine, you get closer to six million dollars. So it's it's not. It's not credible for people to say that national parks don't get more money. You're not going to see that. You have to really dig into this report because of course the agency doesn't want to indicate that they are. Favoring one unit or one description over others. You never want to discriminate between the children and the family. And they do support all of them. I'm not in any way criticizing the National Park Service. But I I do want to address the other issue, which is that. Some. People believe that there is. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. So I guess what I want to indicate is that. Yes, I we do hope that there'll be economic development. We do need to see more hotel rooms around here. And I think the choice that the no park people are giving to us is that instead of hotels and jobs. And opportunities for our children and grandchildren to have jobs here, develop careers. And stay in this area where we all love it so much. Instead of having to go live in urban areas in order to make a living and and keep going. What they're offering us is lots of warehouse. Because you don't get that. Somebody is going to develop those private lands and we would rather see it developed because this is a tourist area. So in response to your request for more information, I know you've had some of this information in the past, but I brought you the the actual proposal. I brought you the frequently asked questions. I brought you an op ed that was published in the local papers. I brought you a response that we sent to a private. Bushkill, who wrote with a lot of very astute questions. I brought you another Delaware River National Park Lenape Preserve important facts. I brought you a paper called Return to the Homeland About the Lenape. I. Brought you another op ed. I brought you. A paper entitled Why the Delaware Water Gap Should Become a National Park and Preserve. This is the criteria for national parks, which came out under John Jarvis. And I don't mind telling you that I had a hand in that. And. This is a letter I wrote to the riverkeeper, to Maya Van Rossum, in response to her comments. We don't believe that any organization should determine who speaks for Native Americans. There are many Native American tribes that are related to this area and that. They they should not be spoken for by one person. Who has not, as far as I can tell, spoken to them or asked for their permission to speak to them. There's a fact sheet about things important to sportsmen. And. There's another article about how the sportsmen have. Put up some opposition to the idea of losing hundreds of acres, but in fact. They stuck it to the actual facts that are in the proposal and not making things up. And then this is a an updated. PowerPoint that addresses more things than what you've seen in the past. In fact, addresses. Every. Comment, question and criticism that we have heard of them. So I'll leave these with you. And I want to thank you all for. For your continued. Dedication to preserving the environment. You know, I see that you have. A giant development just around the corner on two oh nine, which is. Being balanced between economic development and the preservation of the environment. Congressman Cartwright is pushing hard to bring us Amtrak. From Scranton to New York City, which he indicated in the coffee I attended would bring us lots of jobs and lots of more people around here. All the same criticisms that we receive for trying to create a national park and preserve. And, you know, I want to thank you for everything you all do. This is a great town and I appreciate the fact that. You will do the right thing. Thank you very much.
John, one of the things that I think was missing as I read through the the yes park website was. On economic development. There were no footnotes to that I could trace back what the sources were, which I would have liked to know. But there was also a quote supposedly from the no park people that I love, which was. As far as economics, I don't know how they figure how much spending every person is going to do when they come up here, when basically. There's nothing to spend money on. Well, I think the visitor girl would love to hear that.
I've included a lot of quotes from the no park people that have been in the press on television and. And essentially they do not want to see more people here. They don't seem to realize that this is a tourist area. Just recently, the Pike County Commissioner said on channel thirteen that. Tourism and hospitality is the most important thing in Pike County, that because we are a tourist county. Monroe County may have a much more diversified economic base, but Monroe County is also a tourist county as is North Hampton and. You know, and I live a couple of miles from the park border, but I don't believe that that I have a greater right. To those public lands than every other American citizen. We want to see more people come. In fact, the original legislation, the congressional record, the president's comments when he signed the law. Was that he was creating this park, that Congress was creating it specifically. For the fifteen percent of American people who live within a day's drive of Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area. But we want to see more of those people. We want to see that vision of Congress and the president come to complete fruition by bringing more people here. And yes, there are infrastructure issues that need to be repaired. There are. Lots of issues that may or may not come as a result of designation, but all we're asking for is out of. Sixty six thousand acres owned by the United States of a seventy two thousand acre authorized park. That less than ten thousand acres be set aside for the ninety eight percent of visitors who come here for a reason other than hunting. And, you know, I would say that, yes, we we have adopted the stance that we do not want to see any fees imposed. Clearly, the designation has no impact on fees. Two years ago, the Water Gap Recreation Area proposed in their visitor use management plan, an entrance fee. It was rejected. Was rejected by the park. It was rejected by the park service in the end. Local people didn't like it at all. We've adopted their stance. We don't want to see any additional fees. I do believe that. It will not be automatic, but the opportunity for a national park and preserve to find more funding. In what I believe is the most underfunded unit of the entire national park system and in the package. Compares to the other nine parks that are part of the Big Ten. Those ten parks. Have sixty percent of all the infrastructure in the national park system and. All of the other parks have two or three times as much annual funding as Delaware Water Gap. And you can see the visitation figures are there, the monetary figures are there and. In any event, this is a vision for. Greater good for the greatest number of people for the longest time, as Gilbert Pinchot told us.
Any other comments before a call and question?
Uh, thank you, John. Brian Barrett here.
Okay, gosh. Everything I wanted to say just went out of my mind, but I'll try and remember. So. I mean, I take John's point that, you know, development is going to come to the area no matter what. We are going to have development. It's about managing development. So it it lines up with the. Vision the community has for our area. And I think you guys are doing a great job trying to manage that. It's tricky. So I mean, I think, like you said, it's a tourist area. It is a tourist area. The tourists are going to come. People are going to come. And I think that's primarily what I've heard from the people that are worried about the park is they don't want more people coming, but people are going to come. It is a tourist area. It's all about how we manage it. I think Robert's point that if it is, if it does become a national park, there's no guarantee that there would be more money, but I feel like if it's not, there's a guarantee there won't be more money. So the only chance to get more money, I think, is making a national park. Just logically to me, it seems like a good thing to do. That's going to be good for the community. It'd be good for, you know, it's a national treasure. It should be a national park. So, but my kids, and I do support it. And I support it too.
Let me just say, please, Brian Barrett. And in security of our area. It's so important as more people come and we've experienced that. Overrun parks and beaches. Just at Smithfield Township costs us close to thirty thousand dollars. We had to hire security. And pay for ourselves, every resident of Smithfield. So I I again. Keep our eyes open and see what's going on. And I I strongly favor the national park.
That said, I just want to. Say also that. I. I wrote the draft based on what was said in the previous meeting. I felt it was fair the public knew where we stood and, you know, when we vote in a moment, I'm also going to vote to to reject the resolution, but. I just wanted the discussion. I think this was a. Better balance than the previous discussion we had, which was. You know, with opponents and. I think that we had.
Be advertised to the public.
These meetings are advertised, but we're going to call the questions. All in favor of rejecting resolution, draft resolution five twenty six?
Hi.
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 All right, this is the. To approve a letter of support for renaming. Sambo Creek. I wince to even say that name, but this is an effort that sparked. Probably fifteen years ago and unfortunately died out at the time, but now. We're seeing a number of municipalities, including East Stroudsburg, Stroudsburg and some other officials interested in this. We did write Mister DePaul from the Lenape Nation about this. He's one of the storytellers. It's his official role. But presently, the Department of the Interior. Is asking for input on the renaming of. Several areas that have derogatory names, if not outright slurs in their names. So. I would like to support the effort to rename it and I'd like us to to be one of the applicants to to change the name.
I I would like to support it. I don't, I wrote a. An email to, I think, all of the people who were on the chain over the weekend. I didn't get any responses, but. I had a conversation with Anthony Stevens Royal. Was our. Sort of Hispanic expert around here and historian. Who informed me that the name for a half breed among the Indians, the Spanish name was Zambal. Which may be where the name came from before it became Sambo.
No, it was it was named after a princess. No, it was, it was named after a princess, an Indian princess. Robert, oh gosh, maybe six, seven years ago, we had a presentation. And that, that was part of why, why it was given.
Was it, was it Sambo or was it?
I thought that the, I thought the Department of Interior did this, they changed it.
No.
And again, I forget how many years ago, but boy, I, I can't find anything yet. But I thought they'd named it the Upper and Lower Reservoir Creek.
I've heard that.
And that they were done, then they were done with it. Maybe we had a follow-up, but boy, I remember that very vividly.
Well, I like to throw in Brushy Mountain Creek too, since that's where it originates and it's, seems a little more evocative than Lower Reservoir Creek.
Yeah, well, that's fair. Well,
If, if I may.
I thought they did that.
They, they didn't. That was, the Upper Reservoir was, was a name that never actually got traction, so it was never changed.
Right, East Stroudsburg.
It was never changed. Well, we can't, okay, I thought it was changed. You say no?
This is to, this is to approve a letter of support for changing the name. This would be sending a letter to the Department of Interior to Secretary Holland. Yeah. And then in conjunction with East Stroudsburg and Stroudsburg, who were the original applicants. East Stroudsburg defeated it years ago. So, um, do I hear a motion to approve a letter of support for renaming the creek?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Leavenheim. I will second. Any questions or comments?
In fact, coincidentally, when the National Geographic Naming Board had contacted the National Park Service, I guess fifteen years ago, I don't remember exactly. And they asked about Sambo Island, which is, you know, comes near where Sambo Creek comes in. And I was shocked. I thought, well, it must have been a family name. It had never occurred to me that it was in any way a racial slur. So I tasked the Chief of Cultural Resources and Interpretation to research it. And he could find no evidence of any thing other than the fact that at one point, the island was used by African-American fishermen who used it as a station, a location where they did their fishing. I know I've read the stories that there was an Indian chief named Sambo and other things, but I don't think there's any and the Department of Interior was, the Geographic Naming Board was poised to change it, but one of the Monroe County Commissioners objected. I forgot her name. And so it was put aside. They don't rush these things. But I want to commend you all, all the towns that are supporting this. But I, what I did do was I took the name off the park map.
Yeah.
We didn't change the name of the island, but I took it off the park map and the range is referred to it as the island formerly known as Sambo. So I just want to commend.
Thank you. Anything further?
Anyway, do you need a second? Jacob?
Jacob Pride, second.
I second it. Yeah, Robert made the motion. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Next is a discussion about non-governmental contributions for 2023, as we're coming up upon the time which we would normally make contributions. In 2022, this is prepared by our Budget and Finance Manager. Um, we had given to Camp Apian, Friends of Cherry Valley, Pocono Mountains Art Council, Kettle Creek Environmental Center, Monroe County, Historical Association, Awesome, Pike County Humane Society and Broadhead Watershed Association, as well as the Pocono Wildlife Rehabilitation Center. And then there's also the Rotary Club of the Smithfields that we contributed to. And this year, we already contributed to the United Way. And even though we voted on the last year, the check was cut this year, so that applied to this year. So we have approximately nine thousand dollars that we're able to allocate. In the past, the breakdown has been fairly mundane. Most of the larger organizations like BWA, Awesome Historical Association, all got about a thousand dollars, but others got miscellaneous amounts. And I understand that this year, we, we received asks for additional funds from BWA, from the United Way, and from the Historical Association. Robert, I know that Russ Scott had contacted yourself and that's why this is on the agenda.
Yeah. The Historical Association is trying to reach its goal for the new building. And I think they're within striking distance and they were asking us if we could increase our contribution. You know, I would, I, I hate to cut anybody else out, but it would be nice if we can give them two thousand rather than one thousand this year because of the building fund. But money is tight. I don't, I don't know what we should do.
All right. Well, you would have to cut somewhere because we're not going to run over budget on that.
Please don't take it away from the animal, the people who work with them.
I'm sorry, what?
And just don't take it away from the animal.
We didn't say take it away from the animals, but it's, it's whether, either we go with what we've already got or we try to shave off somebody once, so we can increase to the Historical Society's.
One hundred, we don't give no sense. Where are we giving to the Rotary? I know it's only a hundred and fifty dollars.
The Rotary?
Yeah.
Give it to the Rotary.
Remember, we yearly, we take out an ad and the Christmas tree lighting, we sponsor that.
That's just an ad.
Well, but we can cut back on things like that.
Well, we, we support their initiative and frankly, I think a hundred and thirty dollars is too little, but that's what we've done, so. I, I propose table numbers until our next meeting so we can have a proposal with some solutions prepared by, prepared for by Lucas.
I'll second that. Table it.
All right. Motion by myself, second by Mr. Leavenheim. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Now Ron is, oh, he's still with us for another six minutes because he has another meeting. Ron had previously asked us to add another item to the agenda. So I'm going to make a motion that under the sunshine law, we amend our agenda to include item D on a new business, which is consider a motion to direct the solicitor to prepare a resolution for the condemnation of portions of airstrip road and approve the fifteen thousand dollar escrow for our cost improvements reimbursement agreement. Do I hear a second to amend the agenda? Motion by myself, second by Mr. Leavenheim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now pursuant advice.
Wait, I'm sorry. Brian, I didn't catch your vote. Sorry.
Yeah, I, I, that blew right by me. Can you go over that again, Jacob, please?
For Ron, it's the motion to direct the solicitor to prepare a resolution for the condemnation proceedings of portions of airstrip road.
I'm sorry, okay. Yeah, I, I definitely would second or voie.
I, I will construe that as an aye for adding it to the agenda. And now I will make a motion to approve that agenda item. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leavenheim. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Ron, I think that should take care of that. So let us know if you need anything else, a copy of the draft minutes or the video of this meeting or whatever's best.
I would think that that motion should do it now. Let me ask you this, just because I want to make sure we don't have any issues moving forward. The, the agreement that you had approved earlier, the cooperation and cost agreement, did not have the amount of the fifteen thousand dollar escrow. Now that that has been approved by this motion, I am taking the position that that agreement has now been reaffirmed, if you will, with the fifteen thousand dollar cost in it. And that can then be moved to be finalized. Again, as I said, I believe the Industrial Authority signed off this morning on these agreements.
Correct.
So I don't, I don't think we need another motion. However, I do know that Mr. Correa is on and I believe Attorney Kanziger is on. So if they believe another motion needs to be made to reapprove the cooperation agreement with the fifteen thousand dollars, I'll leave it to them to make that call since it's, you know, their project. And I'm not saying that to be a wise guy. I mean it sincerely. So they think that they would want another motion for that, certainly they can make that request and the board can then act on it.
Amen. I see Michelle on there. Michelle, can I construe that as our dual motion there is sufficient for your needs?
I believe so. Thank you for taking action. Yes.
Awesome. Next is the Board of Supervisors report. I have nothing to note myself. Robert, Brian, do you have either, do you have anything to note?
I do not.
All right. Next is the consideration to pay the bills. We have bills in the amount of a hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. And that is all our regular expenses, legal, engineering and utilities. There is nothing surprising in there, except there is also a one payroll in that. So that's, that's that. Do I hear a motion to pay the bills?
Motion to pay the bills. Hundred and seven, seven oh six, one zero zero.
Motion by Mr. Leavenheim. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Barrett, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 With comments not related to the agenda? Ms. Barrett?
I have ten thousand dollars sitting somewhere that was given to me by John Kortimer, the Men's Things Park. Do you still have it? Oh.
We do still have it. It is sitting in a separate fund and Lucas and I are in the process of going through the small accounts at this time.
And the other thing is, you never return anybody's phone calls. You're the secretary, you never return an email. Never. To me.
All right.
And Robert, are you resigned?
My what?
Resigned? Why don't you throw a fit with one of my signers in my petition saying you resigned?
So only if you win, Bill.
No. All right. Well, let's pass on that.
And Jacob, if you want a copy of my petition, I can give you one.
No, I already looked.
I know you did.
Yep, not a worry. Yep. Okay. All right. Any relevant public comment?
The only comment I have, Mr. Chair, is that you said we'd be done by six forty-five and it's six forty-five.
Amen. Second. All in favor? Aye. We had done six forty. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, good night.
Thank you, everyone. Good night. Be safe.
Good night, everyone.